Hey, Courtney.
That's what I wait for. Zoom live.
Oh, you just erased.
All last year's meetings.
Rick's gonna erase.
Re- Courtney.
I don't like that.
We're going.
Okay, so I'd like to call the August second Lacy Plan Commission meeting to order. We do, I should mention, we do have a quorum. I'm looking for a motion for approval of the agenda in the consent item.
So moved. Second.
Who's executed? Any questions? All those in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
Opposed? Carries? Commission members' reports.
We got public comments before that.
Oh, thank you. Public comment. You're in charge, Ryan.
So we do have the opportunity to address the planning commission tonight. If anybody would like to provide public comments, this is the time to be able to do that. You can do that by using the raise hand function and we'll go ahead and bring you in if you have any public comments. So we just hit that raise hand function and we'll bring you in. Going once. Going twice. I don't see anybody, Dave, so okay.
All right, we will move on to commission members' reports.
Um, I was just gonna say, we went to, there was like a car show and the, had all the food trucks at the depot. It was a Friday night a few weeks ago, which is, the depot is a great little facility. The parking was nice. It, you know, lots of food trucks, lots of people there. Just a great Lacy event, so um, we went and enjoyed it and had great tacos and acai bowls and saw a few Camaros, so it's cool.
Okay.
Well, I've been back a very short time, but I did go to the Hunterford Park for a concert. And it was just so nice. They do such a nice job setting things up. There was Colonial Inn bus was there and there was there were people sitting in a tent from there. And I happened to walk by. I thought if I could just tell somebody that this is so wonderful. And I just looked at this woman and I looked at her name tag and it said supervisor. I said, are you? Yes, I'm at Barks. I said, this is fabulous. Thank you so much. It's very nice. Lot, lots on the agenda this year. It's packed.
Is that, is that Jan?
Uh, it could be Jan, it could be um, uh, Jeanette Seiler, maybe? Or Jordy, they do a lot of the events.
Jeanette.
Jeanette, yeah.
So, yeah, they do a great job. Good selection of entertainment. Yeah.
Awesome.
Yep.
Okay, nothing for me.
Well, nothing for me except that this Thursday at the city council, they're honoring a lady who lives at Panorama who's in her late nineties, I believe. But she was a surgical nurse in World War Two, Vietnam, Korea, everything in between. And she's, she's about four foot nothing and she's a dynamite person. I mean, she's just amazing. And she's got a lot of history. She's, she was in the Navy, but she's, I'm really happy that she's getting honored while she's still alive. Because she's just a wonderful person. Barbara Nichols is her name.
And that's at the council.
At the council, yeah, they're gonna honor her, so.
Thanks.
And nothing tear apart.
Okay, so we will move on to the directors' report.
Thank you, and I have uh, just one thing I want to mention is happening during the month, uh, evolving during the month of July. Um, related to the uh, state right away initiative. Can you all hear me okay?
Yeah, I just had to turn it up.
Regarding the state right away initiative process, and this is that, I just even may saw um, report back in the early July. Where the city of Lacey into, into an MOU with the state of Washington, Department of Commerce, Department of Transportation, State Patrol, along with our partner local jurisdictions, Thurston County, Olympia and Tomata. And the, the states have that initiative to um, address homeless encampments that are along the I five right away corridor. And with that, they're working with the local jurisdictions to um, um, remove those encampments and offer those individuals uh, shelter and services. So as part of that, we don't have existing uh, infrastructure or shelter beds and capacity. So the state in part of their initiative is bringing uh, funds to help build and expand shelter opportunities and housing opportunities in, in the region. And so the MOU was kind of set the umbrella of how that will function. Um, that's now evolved to that the state has now providing the Thurston County region about thirty seven million dollars. And that's going to be broken out into uh, several functions. And I won't be able to go into a lot of details yet because this is still evolving, but I expected our next planning commission, I can provide more detailed information. Um, but the uh, basically they're going to be looking at funding, um, funding for, to create a fifty unit tiny home village, probably in the city of Olympia, Brands Anderson Roadway, road area. They're also going to support twenty four beds at the new Unity Common Sh- Shelter. So they can have immediate placement of individuals as they uh, work to uh, clean up some of those encampments. And um, uh, also provide uh, funding for domestic violence hotel vouchers. This is an existing program, so they're enhancing that program for those individuals that are fleeing domestic violence situations. And then they're also providing funding um, for a hotel acquisition. And along with the tiny home village and hotel acquisition, they're also funding two years of operational dollars, which is key as well. So they're bringing quite a bit of money to the table, and so we're working on um, through the regional housing council, um, technical staff team. And with our um, uh, local councils working on putting together the package and, and beginning the outreach process. And some of that stakeholder outreach process could occur as soon as the um, well, could be a, I think the sixteenth of August. And I'll also be able to find a very updated, more detailed report of how things are progressing at that point in time. I just wanted the planning commission to be aware that these actions are taking, um, have been going on and involving. And at some point, there could be bringing on uh, up to another hundred uh, beds that are um, more in the transitional housing that could be converted into permanent supportive housing over the next three or four years. Adding to our capacity to provide uh, shelter and housing for individuals. And this would be aligned with what the work we've done with our housing action plan, as well as the work that was done by the homeless committee. And so um, again, I'm, I'm going to a lot of details of what the hotel acquisition will look like. But that will be coming out in the next couple of weeks, and I can give you probably more detailed briefing at your next meeting. Is there any questions regarding that?
I did see the exit on, on to Pacific Northbound. I five was closed for a couple days as they cleaned out that area.
Oh yes, thank you. Um, so the, as we're working on these agreements for shelter and, and funding for these op- uh, these opportunities. The benefit of uh, supporting those uh, twenty four beds at Unity Commons was they were able to begin work on some of the uh, sites along the corridor. Their first site was actually Lily Road, which occurred the first of July. Where they cleaned up a, a small encampment on Lily Road. And then the, the second action's happening this week, which you just referred to, Dave, is along Pacific Avenue interchange. Um, so they're working at um, as they, uh, worked, they're working on the smaller camps first, to get the system down, make sure they have opportunity to provide and offer those individual services. And have an opportunity to accept them. And then as they, you know, get the system done and, and get a better understanding of what the circumstances out there. They'll start looking on, working on the larger encampments that we see along the corridor.
I'm actually just curious, what do they do if they clean out that place on Pacific, you know, by the freeway there? What do they do to prevent that from being reoccupied in the next forty eight to seventy two hours?
The um, that was one of the challenges we've had over the, the past several years is, is that enforcement of uh, trespassing the role of State Patrol. So part of the MOU is the commitment from the state, is the State Patrol will support ongoing trespass enforcement. Because again, these are state rightaways, they're, they're intended for vehicle travel and safety, so it's not a safe condition to be camping out in, in these rightaways. And then that coordination for longgoing enforcement will occur with the local law enforcement jurisdictions along the corridor in the county. So that's all set up to reinforce, so we don't have those camps reestablished. It's a model that's been framed very similar to what we have done with our agreement with um, what the uh, Department of Transportation there at the Slater Kinney, on the Lacy side, Lacy right uh, jurisdiction side of Slater Kinney exit. Where we capped a number of uh, individuals in that camp, didn't let anymore, uh, didn't allow that camp to grow. And we've continued to offer services until that, those individuals end up leaving that encampment area where they were able to clean it up.
Anything else, Rick?
That's it for me.
Okay. We will now move on to new business. Ryan, the uh, L M C sixteen point three six neighborhood commercial zone, do some educational.
Yeah, exactly. I think Rick's gonna kick this off, um, and give you a little introduction of kind of what we're here for tonight, and then I'm gonna provide a little bit of information as well as Hans, so I'll let Rick go first.
Yeah, I just wanted to um, just take a minute or two, just to kind of, to frame this. As we um, I think we're all aware of the uh, uh, the recent conditional use permit process that went through the land use permitting uh, process for City Lacey, that the Meridian Market and Field project. And um, the uh, comments and concerns that were raised by the neighborhood regarding that particular uh, proposal in the neighborhood commercial zip district. And through that process, we briefed the planning commission, we had some conversations several months ago. And I think uh, Chair Lawson, you brought up the conversation about what about those other vacant parcels along Lamont Drive, which there are some additional neighborhood commercial zones out there, as well as elsewhere around the city. And um, and of course, as the, the council uh, worked through the, their role in that uh, conditional use permit process. And ultimately made their final decision, they can now talk about the project, because before they couldn't, because it was a closed record for them and they couldn't have the, they had to maintain their appearance of fairness. But now that that's over, they have expressed um, um, concerns over um, neighborhood commercial zones and the relative, it is to today's uh, markets and uh, and needs. And so out of that, we're working to um, have the conversation about relooking at the neighborhood commercial zones and reassessing uh, what they uh, what, what they uh, look like in context to the neighbors that they developed out. And uh, we're going to be actually having a conversation with the city council. Um, at a work session on the twenty fifth of this month, to introduce this topic to them and have a little more robust conversation with them, and then kind of get direction from them, how to proceed and reviewing. And if they want to proceed to update the uh, the zoning classification for neighborhood commercial. One of the pieces that this will lead into is, as we uh, move forward and uh, towards our twenty twenty five conference plan update, we're also going to need to look at our entire zoning code, implementation codes. And uh, look at all of our land use classifications, and if we do move forward on the neighborhood commercial uh, review, this could set a template for how we review all of our various zoning classifications that are currently in place as we update the competency plan in twenty twenty five. Um, so again, tonight is just kind of give the um, the planning commission an opportunity to uh, kind of get some background on the neighborhood commercial zone, kind of what we have out there in terms of designations, where some of the, what some of the existing policies uh, that establish those zones and intent and purpose. And then for us to kind of talk about what we see as next steps, um, as we take on this uh, review based on the council's direction after their August twenty fifth work session. Um, so with that, I just want to give a little bit of context. I know it's a very familiar topic to all. I know Ryan and, and Hans has a lot of good information they're going to share with you, kind of giving an overview of, of the neighborhood commercial classification. Um, but before we jump into that, just want to take a little, do you have any questions on, on um, you know, where this is going? No, this is, okay, let's jump in and, and let Ryan uh, uh, kick off the presentation.
Yeah, so thanks, Rick. Uh, what I'll go through is a little bit, like Rick mentioned, the kind of the background of the neighborhood commercial zone as far as kind of the intent. Also, we'll kind of review together what's in the actual neighborhood commercial code right now. And then uh, turn it over to Hans. Hans has got some good information on kind of where these zones are and how developed they are and those kinds of things, what uses are there. Um, you know, what's developed, what's not, that kind of thing. And then finally, we'll come back and talk just a little bit about potential ideas for public participation, because obviously that's going to be a big portion of this, is, you know, engagement of, of neighborhoods that have been concerned. Um, where we might do that, we might do a bit of a roadshow, you know, that kind of thing. So, but we'll get to that at the end and we'll talk about what that, that might look like. So, um, so as I mentioned on the staff report, the, the neighborhood commercial zoning district has been around for quite a while, Lacey, back to nineteen eighty. Um, we've done some small tweaks and updates, but no real whole, big wholesale changes since the nineteen eighties. And in fact, when I go through some of the uses in that zone, you'll see that some of them are a little long in the tooth as far as like videos, video stores and soda fountains and those kinds of things. So um, you know, we haven't really taken a, a big deep dive into the neighborhood commercial zone. And in fact, and as Rick mentioned, that, that would include other um, generally kind of commercial zones as well. So both our general commercial and our community commercial zones, as well as some of our central business district zones. We really haven't focused on them too much lately, because we've been so focused on residential. You think about all of our residential work over the last number of years, you know, upzoning and, and changing densities within zoning classifications. And the low density zone consolidation and all these things have really been focused on residential. Um, while the commercial has re- remained relatively untouched. I mean, as far as I've been, you know, with the city for, you know, well, since I was an intern back to the early nineties. And I don't really remember too many wholesale updates for our commercial zones in over twenty years, so. Um, it's been a while. Um, the intent of the neighborhood commercial zone is to provide those small day-to-day commercial uses in close proximity to, to residents. The, the idea is, is that they um, you know, be in somewhat strategic locations around the city, in close to neighborhoods where people can have day-to-day services met without need for a car. Um, it goes a long ways towards meeting, you know, goals for vehicle miles traveled, sustainability. It brings neighborhood character as well. A lot of, you know, commercial areas provide the, kind of the neighborhood hub. In fact, a lot of these neighborhood commercial zones um, are identified at, in our comp plan as neighborhood nodes. That's the, that's the language we use in our comp plan as neighborhood nodes, because they're really kind of the focus area, the gathering point of the neighborhood. Um, so the, the uses, let's go through the uses a little bit. So the, the way that the regulations, chapter thirty six, sixteen thirty six is handled, is there's, there's two main ways that we regulate land use in the neighborhood commercials on. The first is the uses and the second is the size. So, and looking through the uses, um, and that's in your packet, you could have all kinds of um, you know, bakeries, barber shops, beauty salons, cafes, um, coffee shops, delis, drugstores, florists. Um, there is a laundry list of different uses, and they really, they really lend themselves towards those, those day-to-day uses. There are a couple that are um, uh, designated as conditional uses. So those that require going through a conditional use permit, that aren't just outright permitted uses, those are bars and cocktail lounges. So um, I would assume that would be anything that really kind of served alcohol as a primary, so it could be a tap room or, you know, or something like that. The other is a, a gas station. So anything that is a gas station also requires a conditional use permit. And that's the reason for the conditional use permit process associated with the Meridian Market gas station proposal is that it was identified in here as a conditional use permit. The idea, I think, between those uses being conditional uses and not outright permitted uses is that it provides additional review and scrutiny and the ability to put additional conditions on how a, a use like that could operate. For example, things like hours of operation, uh, noise concerns, light concerns, those kinds of things. It's not a way necessarily to be able to um, hold a public hearing and deny a project based on community sentiment. But it is a way to be able to provide additional scrutiny, review and conditions associated with that type of proposal. So one of the things that we'll do as we go through this process is we'll talk to the, talk to the neighbors and, and get feedback on what uses are appropriate for those zones. Um, you know, and or um, you know, should we even allow certain uses even under a conditional use permit? As I mentioned, there are certain uses in here that are um, a little um, they don't really apply anymore. Things like a camera store, um, there's uh, a soda fountain. Um, you know, those types of uses that um, photo shops, uh, uh, video rental stores. Uh, things that really just don't apply anymore. They're, you know, so you can tell that this is starting to get a little old. So I guess, you know, the, the takeaway for the planning commission is, is that, you know, we definitely want to use our community outreach to go through and, and have conversations with the community as far as what uh, an appropriate use is and, and update some of these use, uses. And, and really, another question would be, should they even be so specific? I mean, we, we regulate like, you know, whether or not you could have certain uses. Can we just say retail or just restaurant? Or, you know, those kinds of things. What's the difference between a soda fountain and a diner or a deli?
Is it, is it possible to, to list, to have a list only of those things that require conditional? I mean, a business is a business, right? And it, and we're never going to keep up with what's out there, but it, but there are certain things that perhaps would always remain conditional.
Or prohibited as well.
Yeah, that may be a shorter list than.
Exactly. So like, for example, we did a major update to our Woodland District. Zone, and we went from a standard zoning classification to something that was more form-based. And that, while I don't imagine that we would go to a full form-based code here, it is something that we can utilize some of those tools in that toolbox to say, we're not so worried about the uses as we are with the orientation of the buildings, the design, making sure that it has, you know, the neighborhood character that people desire. We're not too concerned if it's a deli or a soda fountain, right? And, and there may still be uses though that we say, no, they shouldn't go here, right? Uh, things that are not in keeping with, you know, that, that level of what a neighborhood should be. Um, and, or what neighborhood commercial area should be. And really, the focus of that neighborhood commercial area is, is focusing on the residents that are there. Not so much bringing in people from, it's, it's not a regional facility, right? So it's very localized. What are those things that are, people are using on a day-to-day basis? Um, and really focusing on the, that, those uses prohibiting others that maybe bring people in from a more regional area outside of the neighborhood. Does that make sense? Uh, one other thing I wanted to mention as far as the uses before I move on to the, kind of the size limitations, is residential is allowed in neighborhood commercial, but it has to be above first floor, a first floor use. So that could be a first floor dentist office or a commercial use. Um, it could be, you know, a bunch of different things, but it has to be up, above that. So second story residential is allowed. I think that's something as well that we probably will look at, is what level of residential is appropriate for a neighborhood commercial area. I don't think we have any existing um, residential in any neighborhood commercial areas right now. So as I mentioned, one way that we address the, the uses with, or the neighborhood commercial compatibility issues is through uses. The other is through building size. So these are small scale uses, right? So if you think of like a regional shopping center or commercial area, that's going to be, you know, in the neighborhood of a hundred thousand square feet plus. These are a much smaller. In fact, there are regulations that state that the maximum gross floor area of a building for a single use, so a single occupancy is ten thousand square feet. Um, for a building that has uh, multiple uses, that's up to forty thousand square feet. Um, so if you had, you know, a dentist office and a restaurant and something else maybe, that, that could equal forty thousand square feet. But a standalone individual building is limited to ten thousand square feet. So one of the things we'll look at again is whether or not those sizes are appropriate for this, this level.
So it doesn't have to be one, one business essentially.
Right. If it's a standalone, single occupancy business within a building, within a single building, that's limited to ten thousand square feet. But if it's joined together, if it's a multi-tenant, for lack of a better term, a strip, you know, then, then that could be up to forty thousand square feet.
Based on one story or multi-story.
So it's, it's a flat number, so um, it would be, if you had a, a multi-story building, and it would max out at forty thousand square feet, that would be a two-story building at, at each, each level being twenty thousand square feet. So it doesn't say, um, it says gross floor area, so that's, that's not um, limited. Or that would be based on the entirety of the building and not just the first floor. There are other things like maximum building coverage. You can only cover uh, up to fifty percent of the site and building coverage, up to seventy percent in development coverage, so that would be adding on things like your parking lot and other impervious areas onto that, that calculation.
So if you had one, it could be ten thousand. If you had two, it could be forty.
Correct. Correct. All it says is multiple uses.
Instead of, if you had two, you could have twenty.
Right.
Or three, you could have thirty. Four, you could have forty, then that might be the max.
He said that they max out, sorry, go ahead. He said they max out at two stories, but I thought it said thirty-five feet. Wouldn't that be a three-story building?
Uh, so it, it does max out at thirty-five feet, which is the same as I mentioned as our residential zones. A, a thirty-five foot tall building with a pitched roof is really going to be two stories. It, it could potentially be three stories, but it would, it would be, um, have to have a flat roof at that point. Or a very, very low sloped roof to be able to get up to three stories.
So obviously, Ryan, you weren't here when they drafted this in nineteen eighty to put the permitted uses. Is there a risk if we don't list the permitted uses to get somebody to petition in the neighborhood? You know, take learnings from the gas station issue, even though that was listed and conditional, you know. What if it's something we don't envision and it doesn't fit with the neighborhood and we haven't listed, um, I think that's a, a pretty big risk for us, right?
Yeah, absolutely. And we've already talked about that, is that is the, the, the side of what, what happens if we don't list all the uses and the first one that comes in that people don't like, you know, then we're under fire for, you know, maybe making a decision on something that, that people didn't like. The, the counter to that is that we really need to focus on architectural standards, the, the, the building size, the building placement on the site, site to make sure it's compatible with the neighborhood, that, you know, it's pedestrian oriented and those kinds of things. Because uses change, but buildings usually stay a lot longer than the uses that they're associated with, right? So um, you think about a building, it's going to be a multi-tenant building, maybe somebody who doesn't like an individual use that's going in there, but the building will be there for a long time. And as long as we've got the building orientation right, pedestrian orientation and those kinds of things, those uses will tend to come and go. Um, so really, you know, the, the way we can look at this is, okay, maybe we tone down the, the uses a little bit, but, but we ramp up the, the architectural design compatibility standards um, to address the neighborhood compatibility issues.
But the issues, some of the more vocal issues on the gas station weren't about how it looked though, were they? They were more about the hours of operation and the clientele. So I think, obviously, we want an aesthetically nice building that will fit in the neighborhood for a long period of time. But I think, I don't know, so it is kind of a.
And, and that is the, that is the key, as you identified, Daphne, that is the key um, feedback that came from the community was the use. And we want to know if they would have supported the, the, the convenience store mark without the fueling station, because the fueling station did create the conditional use permit, permit and a whole different process. If it came in just as a convenience store type of mix, or if it came in as a mixed use with some mixed residential or more, you know, neighborhood-focused, um, um, would be, you know, that had been acceptable, though we don't know that. But they did have concerns about those clientele and those type of things, and so it's really hard to gauge and kind of pick what uses would be or would not be. So that's the purpose of going through this process, and we'll get to it at the end of the presentation about next steps. But ultimately, we're going to start this process with engaging these uh, various neighborhoods that have these neighborhood commercial districts to kind of get their feedback and start getting some, hopefully some interaction from them to what, how do they see finding these solutions? If they want to have certain type of services in their neighborhood, how do we balance these type of issues? And get that feedback to build on and report back to the planning commission. So it's not something kind of figure out now, but that's what this process would be to try to uncover.
And then the last thing I'll mention before I turn it over to Hans is that we do have, we, we talked a little bit about architectural standards. We do have, so there's, if there's not a lot of definition in our current code, in the zoning chapter of our current code, over. chapter of our current code over the architectural standards, there's setback requirements, some dimensional requirements. But really that's addressed through design reviews. That's the, the administrative review of things like your building elevations, your landscaping plans and those kinds of things that actually occur after the land use approval has been completed. So that's one of the important things with form based code is it kind of takes the, the architectural standards and, and the zoning standards and kind of wraps them into one. Which then I think helps people understand a little bit better what a project's going to look like. Otherwise it's really just, you know, a, a land use application can be literally just a site plan. You know, people don't know what the building's going to look like, what, if it's going to meet the neighborhood character standards. So again, looking at potential options and one of those being that we kind of take some more architectural standards and take them maybe out of design review and fold them a little bit more into zoning standards, just as a potential idea. So Hans is going to go over with you where these zones, first of all, where these zones are located in the community and we're really just going to focus on only those ones that are in Lacey. They do occur in the urban growth area, in the unincorporated area, but we're going to just really for tonight, focus on the city limits. And then also go up over some inventorying that he's done to kind of look at the level of development that some of these are at, what the uses are that are already there and some of those other kind of demographic things that go along with that. Before I turn it over to Hans, we do have a full packet of, he's basically inventoried every site and it can be too long for the planning commission tonight. So what we've done is we're going to hit the highlights and provide you with a follow-up email to, to have the, the full inventory set tomorrow. Hans, go ahead.
Hey, everyone. So the map that I hope you all can see now. Yes, now maybe so. Perfect. So this is just a high level, high level overview of the, the city at large. Within the city, there are eight different neighborhood commercial locations. Then we actually have four more in the UGA for a total of 12. This white line here is the city boundary. We have three to the north of I-5. And then another four to the south of I-5. The three to the, the north are actually mostly undeveloped with the exception of the the market, Meridian Market that's in, in the pipeline. And then the, the four to the south are actually predominantly developed with a few that have some, one that's undeveloped and one that has some parcels that are still undeveloped versus the rest that are pretty built out. In general, they range in size from about 1.5 acres, which is actually the Meridian Markets site, all the way up to around 7.2 acres. So that's actually this one down here on Elm Highway. And then all of them actually have utility and transit services. At least access to them. So, so they're all geared up in that sense. But I did also bring in the Lacey zoning map. And what you can see here is that the yellow and orange colors, we're not going to go into too much detail on what these are, but the yellow and orange generally represent residential uses. So you see that these locations are located in areas that have a lot of yellow and orange, generally located in pockets that have that around them versus more of our commercial center. You can kind of see in these areas in here. So that's kind of a, a high level map of it. And now I want to do is actually pivot over to the inventory. I don't know if that just worked or if I should stop sharing and then re-share again.
You can see it, Hans.
Perfect. Alright, so I pulled together a slide deck that really kind of goes into a little bit more detail on each location. And as Ryan said, we're going to talk about a few of them, not necessarily all of them today. But I did a inventory of number of acres, level of development. So this one is at the corner of Marvin and 41st Avenue and is completely undeveloped at this time. It's only one parcel. They range from actually portions of parcels all the way up to I think six different parcels to make up each one of these zones. This one's undeveloped. And then I pulled in some other just general reference information. So traffic counts actually for Marvin and 41st in this area to get an idea of just how much activity is going on in this area. And then adjacent zones. So for, in this example, there's a lot of open space directly around it. And then to the east, you see over here, this medium density residential. And then there's sewer and the bus line route 65 actually services this area. And then this is a street view of what this one looks like today. Or whenever the street view photo, I should say, was taken. So maybe a year or two ago, but pretty recent. And then we did a snapshot of a couple of other things. So looking at things like income, number of businesses, commute patterns. Another key facts about the number of people that live in this area and that can potentially use these zones further kind of basic needs. And this is looking within a quarter mile radius, which is approximately a five minute walk. Generally speaking, so kind of sticking with that neighborhood level kind of services, you know, the one or two items that you may have forgot that day. Quick little errands, not your larger kind of shopping, but just kind of your neighborhood level items. So that's what you see here. And as Ryan said, I am going to send all of these your way. So you don't have to absorb it all today. By any means, but this is another example. So this is actually the Meridian Market location. Again, this is a single parcel. It is currently undeveloped. And then types of uses that are around it. So a lot of open space that you kind of see here. There's a park located here and then low density and moderate density residential surrounding it. And then I'm going to skip ahead, you know, skip this one because it's another example of undeveloped. So those are the three to the north of I-5. And then moving south of I-5, we get some that have a little bit more development going on in them. So this one's at the corner of College Street and Mullen Street and Mullen Road. This, I don't know if you can see my cursor, but this building right here is called The Farm. And it's actually a mixed, so I think that there's a five or six different tenants in that building actually. So kind of getting back to what Ryan was talking about, about scale of development, depending on the number of different businesses or activities that are going on in that location. And then we do still have a little bit of what is generally considered undeveloped over here. And then these three parcels over here on this side would be more on the development side of things. So you can see that there are five parcels in this one. It's approximately 66% developed. It's a total of 5.2 acres. And then we also did this total value of the site versus the buildings themselves. And that gets that kind of the type of development that is on that site and the value of that compared to the land it's on. So really kind of getting at that. Is it being fully built out and is there a likelihood that it's going to be redeveloped in the future? So just another piece of information to think about as far as just the context of what's going on each one of these locations. And then we did do kind of a.
For just a second.
Yeah, for sure.
So one of the important things I wanted to point out and Hans got some updated information on are the traffic counts. A lot of our kind of research into this and some of our, our knowledge basically says you need an order for a neighborhood commercial zone to be able to succeed. You need kind of a critical mass of residents around it to be able to support it. For example, if you look at this aerial photograph, it's not the most dense right around it, but and probably doesn't, has never really had the residential to be able to support it. But if you look at the traffic counts, look at the traffic counts that are along College Street. So every day there's average, so ADT is average daily trips. As there's 26,000 trips that go by the site. So while we don't have the densities in some areas, the housing densities to be able to support some of these, we do have essentially the density and drive-by traffic every day to, to support them. So if you'll notice, some of the ones in Meridian Campus were like 5,000, 4,000 ADT, and this one's 26,000. So you'll notice that those that are the most developed have the most amount of drive-by traffic and are generally the ones that, that is the reason that they've been developed is because they have the traffic to be able to support, you know, those uses. So with that, I just wanted to explain some context there.
Quick question, because that's commotion there on the bottom left. Does that play into some of how these are going to develop, like proximity to like a large school like that? I, I, I just, I wonder if neighborhoods would be more sensitive to what is being placed in a neighborhood commercial relative to schools or churches or other things.
Yeah, yeah. There's definitely going to be more sensitivity. In fact, you know, there are, you know, regulations, state regulations that say you can and can't sell certain things within, you know, a distance of a school, you know? Liquor was always the, the example, but there's now marijuana and there's other uses that are, are, are limited, you know, for the proximity that you can have a, a certain commercial use statewide. I guess it, it doesn't necessarily prohibit it. It gives the school district the option. If it's within a certain distance, but I think most school districts just basically say, no, we don't want it. So kind of puts a, a de facto limitation on any of those kind of uses within proximity to schools. But yeah, there's definitely, and, and that got brought up in the Meridian Market, you know, was there, you know, proximity to a park, proximity to a school? And, you know, there were some concerns there with that use and proximity to that, that school.
And to follow that up, actually the majority of these locations do have a school in close proximity to them. You'll kind of see as we scroll through these graphics, aerial view, you'll actually see some kind of educational facility within a short distance of a lot of these locations. So that is a great point. Yep. So, and then to Ryan's comment, ADT, it is kind of messy in, in some sense, especially in any number that's any date that's 2019, 2020. That's right around the kind of COVID period when traffic gets pretty funky as far as numbers go, but we do have these, it is just a data point really to kind of provide additional context. So you're kind of compare these different locations and get a little bit of an idea of what level of activity is going on there, but keep that in mind when some of these, especially those 2019 and 2020 dates.
About traffic flows and that is that, having driven down college many, many times. Is, is there a point at which the traffic is too much for access and egress to these smaller centers? I mean, given the fact that I'm driving down college, would I stop and buy a quart of milk at this place or would I go to Safeway? Do you know what I mean?
I don't think it's as, as much about the, the total amount of traffic. What I've heard from the development community is that you want to be on either the drive-in or the drive-out, right? Depending on the, the type of use that you have. If you're going to be, you know, coming, let's say from you know, Rainier or Yelm and your job in Lacey and you're going to be a Starbucks, you want to be on the drive-in, not the drive-home, right? Versus maybe a gas station or a fast food restaurant or something like that, where maybe it's more important to be on the drive-home. So I haven't heard it too much as far as like, there's too much traffic. I mean, obviously that can affect access. You know, ability to take, you know, turns in and out, but really for, for, I think what we've heard from the development community over the years is they really want to be depending on the use, either on the drive home or the drive-in in the morning or the drive home at night where there are high traffic locations.
And typically your larger shopping activities, if you're getting a lot of groceries, definitely I'd imagine that most folks would choose to go to Safeway or some larger style grocery store. And then these ones kind of with that neighborhood centric element are really kind of intended for those items that maybe you forgot or just one item that you ran out of, that kind of thing. So it's like a short hop just to grab that one item and get back versus kind of your full week's shopping errands. Yeah. So moving into the types of businesses, so this one was relatively built out. So we actually did have a few single family residences to the north of this end, but we also have things like cosmetic studios, sound reality, financial planners, women's health, karate, coffee stands, auto mechanics and other financial planners and investments. So these are the types of businesses that either exist today or have existed in these commercial buildings in the past. So that's kind of a snapshot of, of what has been here and what is currently doing well. That's that one. And then we have another snapshot of again, the things like income, total number of businesses, commute patterns, education, some other key facts and employment numbers. I'm going to skip this one because it's another undeveloped one. And then jump ahead to this one, which I imagine a lot of you are probably familiar with. This is one of the, I think, oldest ones that's, that's had at least a gas station out there as long as I can remember. But this is on the corner of Ruddle and Yelm. This one is considered 100% developed. There's actually six total parcels that make up this zoning area. The total building to land ratio is 76.8% of the total value is made up within the actual built structures that are there versus the land. And then the directly surrounding it, we see a lot of low density and moderate density residential this aerial view kind of captures. And then this location is actually served by three different bus routes. So 66, 68 and 94. All have routes that go through this intersection right here. And then the types of businesses that exist here, Chevron being the one that you can see in this photo here, but then there's also some dry cleaning, H&R Block. There's hair, nail and tanning salons in there, dentists and doctors, a couple of different restaurants, insurance, physical therapy and then Subway, Cutter's Point, another chiropractic and actually a veterinary hospital. So starting to see a pretty decent spread of the types of businesses that might be attracted to these zones. Depending on the proximity to different types of development. So yeah.
So Ryan, on that one though, we wouldn't allow that kind of build on any of these new ones. Like that, that strip mall where it's just a big parking lot and strip mall all, all along at the back of that, would we? The form base, that would, would that be?
Well, that would be like what a potential code could include, right? So under today's code, those, those buildings, as far as I'm aware, were built under our existing neighborhood commercial code. I, I kind of remember when they were being built, maybe late 90s-ish and those are under basically our current standards. So if we're looking at, at updating a code, then you know, that's potential that we can look at is things like, you know, pushing buildings up to the street and that kind of stuff. As far as I, I know, I, I think the, the gas station has been there for a long time. It used to be the old kind of Ruddle Road General Store, if anybody's been around long enough to remember that. But the commercial around it didn't come along until probably about 20 years ago. So that would have been under our current code. There is a kind of, I'll say more pedestrian oriented kind of fronting building in the lower right-hand corner, right at Yelm Highway and Ruddle. Yeah, that one there is, you know, probably something that you know.
That's Cutter's Point, Cutter's Point.
Yeah, where Cutter's Point is. And then I think there's a subway in there. Kind of more visually appealing, but you know, kind of pushes the buildings up to the street. The rest in the back are more kind of standard strip building.
Alright, and then as far as there's this one that actually is being developed right now. It was on the corner of Yelm and yeah, so this one's on the corner of Yelm and
Palace Street.
There we go. Thank you. Appreciate that. I figured that was going to go poorly if I went ahead with it. Okay. So yeah. But we have some, uh, these are more of the storage unit style development over here. And then this is actually listed as retail. I don't know if there's a, a tenant that's going in here. This point, Ryan, I don't know if you have more information on that, but it's listed as retail right now as far as the general use type that will be located here. So this is actually four different parcels that extend from Yelm Highway off back kind of south over here, southeast. Miscellaneous services. Yeah. So we don't quite have a detail on what that is located within there right now, but we have 71.6% of the total value assessed is made up of the buildings versus the land that's on it that they are located on. And then as far as transportation numbers on Yelm Highway, we have about 13,252 from 2019. And then as far as adjacent zones and uses, we have some open space rural resources. This is actually right on the county line here. And then the McAllister Geological Residential Zone. In our UGA and then high density residential that you start to see over here. And then yeah, it's, uh, has both sewer access and water access and then it's on bus route 64 and 94. And then this is actually the street views right now. So it's Cube Smart Self-Storage, which is here in this photo is a few years old now. So we have another building that's going in here that you saw in the aerial. And I think all the information that I have on that is that it's going to be retail at this point.
What are people keeping in all these storage units? What are people keeping in all these storage units, thicky building? I just, they just keep going up and they're so profitable and
The storage.
And then as far as uses, uh again, uh this is the breakdown for a quarter mile area. And then the last one, I believe it's on our list for today is Mullen Road and Carpenter Road. Uh we have a new roundabout that just went in there not too long ago. Uh but this is four different parcels. And then it has uh this interlake grocery is the name of this one right here. Um and this is an older view, but again, we have uh numbers from twenty seventeen on this one. So some activity, but not quite as high as we've seen in some of the other ones that are more built out. Think that's the end of the uh the list.
As I mentioned, we'll email this out to you so you have kind of the full gamut of all the different ones. Um any questions for Hans on the inventory?
No, thank you.
There's actually fewer than I thought.
Yeah, yeah. Aren't really very many at all.
Just have to get that one in by jubilee.
What, there's probably not a lot of interest in them. There's so much available real retail around that literally building by the Verizon store has been empty for like three years. I keep, I always forget what the name of it is.
Those stores that are on Pacific and Slater Kitty there.
So I just can't imagine there's a lot of people interested in completely developing when they can move into a ready built building.
Yeah, and um you know, for these these sites, you basically have to build a purpose built building to handle the kind of use that's gonna go in there. And a lot of times those buildings um are are fairly high value to construct and the the tenants that go in are not the highest um lease rate tenants. So things like, you know, again, neighborhood scale, you know, you're gonna look at your nails nail and hair salons and those kinds of things. And and so those those lease rates aren't incredibly high. Those are almost things people can kind of almost do out of their houses as home occupation. But they're they're going into these kind of commercial areas. And so there are very few examples of those that have been built recently. I think maybe, you know, the the farm is one example on College and Mullen. That's still probably fifteen years old. Um the one in at Horizon Point is a little unique because um Horizon Point is part of basically a a master plan. And that site um sits kind of down in a hole next to the railroad tracks. And so um the the reason the the um mini storage was able to go in there was number one, it was kind of a compatible use to the the tracks and provide a little bit of a buffer, but also it was a way um to hopefully finance the rest of the project. So by getting the mini storage use and getting that in first, that can then fund the construction of the retail to come later. So a lot of these projects just don't pencil out by themselves.
Storage units is not listed.
It's not. And that's it. That was part of the the Horizon Point master plan to allow that.
Yeah, that was a that went through a in a different process, a master plan amendment, which allowed some flexibility to look at uses in the neighborhood commercial zone that looked that would be um um attributable to the residents of the master plan. But there was a lot of concern about not having any retail or other type of services there. So with the condition of approval that allowed the self-storage and a higher level of design of that self-story, so it had a little better you know, compatibility with the with the village center. Um but also required the retail buildings to be constructed first as well. So ensure that there was retail space there that would be marketed. Now, do I need um um indication of tenants in those spaces yet? But they had to build the retail building so we wouldn't have the mini storage and never have the retail buildings built.
So as Rick mentioned, this is the kind of the next step is this is gonna go to a council work session coming up on the the twenty fifth of August for kind of future for additional discussion, uh trying to get the the council's feedback on on their vision for an update process. But one of the things that we wanted to talk to planning commission about is what could a potential public outreach process look like? And as you've seen, there are essentially kind of two major areas, one in northeast Lacey around around um Willamette Drive and another one kind of south Lacey around College Street, College and Thirty Seventh or College and Forty Fifth. That could be potential areas that we kind of do a a community forum for to go out. And I I think one of the things that we want to do is we don't want to necessarily come up with a bunch of preconceived ideas about what should go in these areas. We definitely want to hear from the community and let, you know, them provide that information first. Um before, you know, give us, give us that feedback and that input that we can then use to help develop what could be a future code in that area versus, you know, us coming up with a code, rolling it out to the neighborhood and saying, how about this? So, you know, I think it one of the, one of the ideas we have, and I'm happy to hear about other ideas that you might have or other stakeholders that you'd want to engage is that we essentially do kind of a little mini roadshow where we would actually go out to these areas. One, you know, is Meridian or uh Willamette where you have, you know, maybe Salish Middle School, we could host something there. Um and additionally, down College Street, maybe Camoshan Middle School, we can host something there. Where we bring in people who are right there in the area, we can literally point across the street and look at what, you know, potential uses could go in there, what the design standards could be. Uh what the concerns would be about compatibility, traffic, those kinds of things, hear from the neighbors and start as have that be the starting point. Um and then come back to the planning commission and, you know, maybe refine some ideas and then go back out to the community as well. And say, hey, you know, this is kind of what we've come up with. Did we get it right? Provide that feedback. But definitely, you know, wanting to talk to the planning commission more if there's other ideas that you have. Obviously, there have been a lot of community conversations over this over the last six months or years. We definitely, and I know you've probably heard from a lot of people, if there's other ideas that you have, definitely want to hear about that as well.
So the UGA is not part of this conversation.
Not at this point. Yeah, I mean, that, um while we do have neighborhood commercial zones in the UGA, they are um all of all of them except one is undeveloped. The only one that's developed is the old um Evergreen Ballroom site, which is basically a gas station and they sell some sheds or something there. The other is um, the others are undeveloped and they're relatively still pretty undeveloped around them. They're still pretty rural. And so um they don't necessarily have the same challenges. They're almost kind of like placeholders, like at the point where those areas finally develop, we get the residential around them, we're gonna need the commercial to come in with them. Uh but there's there, they don't have the residential at this point to even come anywhere close to being able to support them. So at this point, we're just really gonna focus on on city ones and then work with Thurston County eventually to, you know, adopt these codes to be put into the the UGA codes as well.
I I think it's a great idea what you're proposing. I'm worried that there'll be a lack of interest because number one, they'll want to like do a wish list. I'd like these kind of retail to go in here because this would be really great for my personal situation. And we don't have people ready to build those or do those. So I worry that people will get their hopes up and that we're gonna be able to entice certain businesses that they would like to have near them. And then other, since there's nothing imminent there, I don't know if we're gonna capture their interest. Other than if something does come along five years from now or ten years, we'll say, well, we did this roadshow back in twenty twenty two or twenty twenty three and they're gonna be like, well, I didn't live here then or whatever. And which I think is many of the situations that we experienced with the gas station, right? It's just they didn't comment back then. So.
That always is is that challenge with trying to get the feedback at this level and 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 visualizing what something could be and what changes. What um we're looking at doing is though identifying terms of areas of neighborhoods uh that have maybe the undeveloped parcels or um first and focus on those because those are ones that could have something happen in the next several years. And even focusing on the Meridian Campus uh Lamont Drive area because we had such activity out of the neighborhood as a result of the uh Meridian Market proposal, then we can go back to them and kind of have that listening session and and start hopefully getting that dialogue and then asking that question, okay, how do we, how do we guess right if we don't know in five years what could be coming in or not coming in? Is it and ask those questions of do we balance uh design over use or is there a scale of uses? How do we make it so it's flexible but yet protective? What what's that look like? And kind of have that back and forth with them to kind of get that feedback and thought process going. Hopefully we can glean some uh good information from them to bring back, look at research and develop all terms to go back out to not only the planning commission, but also to the public.
So this seems um somewhat visionary and speculative uh in terms of what could be or what may be needed in the future. It's also revisable, just like what we're doing now, correct?
One of the things too, we want to make sure that those uses that we that we do identify are supportable by the market. So that's another thing is that we're gonna, you know, have to make sure that this is somewhat based in market reality. I think, you know, just like Daphne said, well, it'd be great to have, you know, the use that fits my certain situation on every corner, but sometimes that's just not feasible. So that that's another part of this is that you know, we'll have to look at, you know, what is feasible, what, you know, things like the traffic generation, look at the the trips that are in the area that, you know, the and part of like the research that Hogs is doing is looking at things like, you know, making sure that the incomes in the area and those kinds of things support those types of uses because it it it's nice to have a wish list, but the other part of it is, is it really gonna happen if we don't have the right market conditions that would allow that type of a use?
It it, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't generate a lot of community interest until there's sort of an unwish list, you know? We don't want that and we certainly don't want that. But what do you want? You know, I I mean, it it's almost, it's almost easier to ask people at this stage of the game what they don't want.
It's a good idea.
My problem with the whole Meridian thing was the amount the extreme of amount of misinformation that was being placed into the public that just was not ba- based in only fear kind of situations where
Fake news?
That, well, it's all part of that, I guess. Maybe it's all part of that, but it was just the public doesn't understand the process. And so we, you know, I feel that we have the responsibility to like try to get out there the best we can. And you're right, you're right. It's it's when it's in your yard is when when people really pay attention. But that's not when it matters. What it matters is now when they need to educate themselves and if they want to make change, they have now is the time that they can communicate what they wish the change to be and communicate that before it's in front of a hearing examiner. Because we, they, the city council could change that whole zoning uh situation based on maybe some great input that they get that they glean out of maybe us talking with with the public about it. I mean, um you know, those those kind of businesses bring in drug dealers, they bring in uh people, drunk drivers, they bring in uh trash, they bring in prostitution, they bring in all these terrible things because people are reacting out of fear of what's gonna what what they, the worst case scenario, they can figure.
My kids will be lured into a drug.
You know, and um, yeah, me personally, I think it's crazy to put something like that in that area, but that's not what, that's not the code that was, that was not the zoning. You know, I wasn't around when they, we did, when they did that, but you know, it's, I just feel like we have to do something because I see the same people repeating the same kind of input now on Hicks Lake and and it'll be the next one that happens and it'll be the next one. Because they, they just, that's they don't understand the process. There is a process.
Well, but I think I think we need to be careful and because no matter how well we communicate, no matter how good our attempted outreach is, if something happened in three to five years, it will be, we can't say I told you so. We can't say we gave you a chance and you didn't take it or whatever. It won't, that won't, that won't that won't be an an argument they'll accept. That won't be something. So the passions came up because they didn't want that and they only cared when that became what was coming. So I almost think if we go, I don't think we need to do as much. Let's let's take lessons learned from this one, you know, talk, get people, passion maybe down, tucking sense. Figure that into it, but I think we could do a whole lot of outreach and you guys would do so much prepping and we'd have three people show up. And they'd be just because, oh, I thought you were serving free coffee, but um and and they won't even be there when we're making decisions on it or when something's just, I I because it's still gonna happen because and but they may not even live here. And so, no, they're not part of the decision. So not everybody, so I don't know. I think we could do a lot, but I'm not sure it's gonna make any difference when rubber meets the road.
I mean, I, and that's all the way a lot of our public participation goes is but I think what we need to do is we need to certainly offer the forum for people to be able to come and provide the input. I think I think what may frustrate people is that that this won't be able to affect the Meridian Market that's already been decided on, right? But it could be things in the future. And I think, you know, we we have made the statement, whether it's been in the council or other other places, that, hey, if you want to affect that, this is the way to be able to do that. So I think we certainly need to offer this opportunity, whether or not people take us up on the offer is something different. I think, um, you know, there there's certainly, there there's gonna be new residents all the time. That's something that we're facing. There's other ways that we can address these kind of things. We've talked in general about things like a citizens academy or something like that, things that can be inform our community more broadly than just things like zoning or, you know, neighborhood commercial uses on the corner, things like, you know, how do, how does a city council meeting run? What's the role of the planning commission? What does you know, talk to the, go on a a drive along or ride along with the police department? You know, those kinds of things that a citizen academy can do that then creates a little bit more in informed general citizenry um that could be a potential thing that the city could do rather than, you know, focusing so much just on zoning and outreach for for those kinds of things. I think this is something that we would offer through this process, but there are other ways that we can do more citizen engagement just broadly, you know, as a city to our community.
If we do something also not one and done, like, you know, I'm thinking like do a little fun GPS game or something where they could go around to all these sites where you give them coordinates or addresses and they can check out all the neighborhood commercial, but then refresh it annually, resend it out annually. And so, you know, it's not like, hey, we did it in twenty twenty two. But just get the content updated if something, you know, got built out or changed or whatever, and then send it out again. And so you know, drop it to the Olympian, see if they'll put it in the paper or whatever. But I think if we do it one and done, it's not gonna make a difference, but if we continually push it out, pick a time of year and then they'll hear about it more re- more recently than when something happens, but.
That that's a, it's a good idea and 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 um that can also with that um um as we do this process and we roll into the twenty twenty five uh cop plan updates, we're gonna be doing these type of outreaches over the next several years. And so that's a perfect forum to be able to kind of refresh that as well. Um so that's how we can keep it going on. I can just suggest Daphne is a is a way to re- refresh that multiple times a year, at least once a year for the next several years.
I do think that that, you know, it it needs to be prefaced in some way by saying the Meridian Market process or kerfluffle or whatever the hell you want to call it was not the way we want to solve issues in this community. But we need to, maybe there's some way like sending that out or send something out, some written thing or some online thing that talks about the in your specific neighborhood, here's this site. We're trying to decide what, how people would like to see these developed in the future. We cannot guarantee what business comes in. But what would you like to see on this vacant lot in terms of a commercial site or a retail site or whatever it is and not, you know, I want a grocery store, but I would like it to look like this and I would like the access to be easy and I would like and I would like the access to be easy and I would like, you know, blah, 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 whatever. So that, so that then you can at least have some starting ground before you have a public meeting where everyone's gonna ask a lot of diverse questions, but there isn't gonna be a focal point for the for the discussion. I don't know if that makes any sense or not, but it seems to me like in the neighborhood, say the neighborhood around the farm, which is almost completely developed, but not really. Um, you know, it's sort of, you know, what what do you like about this? What don't you like about it? What, you know, what works in this neighborhood, what doesn't work in this neighborhood? And and concentrate it in that, you know, half mile circumference kind of area and see what response you get. Because I think, you know, if you, if you do go out to the middle school and three people show up, we haven't done anything, you know?
So, Bill, I think what you're talking about is almost some pre-pre polling.
Pre-polling, yeah.
Like where you actually do, and we have some polling tools, so like Mentimeter, Rick, would be one idea that we could do. So we've got like a, we've got an online polling system that we could say, you know, we could hold some kind of online forum or even just send it out as a survey or one.
Survey monkey thing.
Yeah, that, you know, and it, but it's a little bit less formal than like filling out a survey. It would be more like, hey, you know, what, and people can write in there, what word, what words describe those types of uses that you don't want, right? Or what are those types of uses that you don't want? And then use that, they could put that in and it creates kind of like a nice diagram that has like the the words that are used the most or the biggest and those kinds of things that.
Exactly, I worked on that.
Yeah, yeah, and and then use that, come to that meeting or whatever it is and share that with people. Hey, we've talked to the neighbors and this is what we're
This is what we're seeing, yeah.
And build off that rather than starting from scratch.
I agree, yeah, yeah.
It seems, yeah, that each neighborhood has a totally different feeling. What's gonna be good on College Street is maybe not gonna fly, you know, in one of the other remote
Yeah.
settings. So how could you get a cohesive document really to reflect the whole community?
Yeah, and we've, we've already chatted, Rick and I have talked, chat about that is that, you know, there, those are certainly different areas of town with it could be different uses, it could be, you know, different zones. I mean, we don't want to get, you know, that far down the the road at this point, but there are certainly different dynamics. You know, and you're seeing that in in demographics and amount of housing and amount of traffic and those kinds of things, so.
Essentially, we're working towards engagement, involvement, input, education. So it's it's back and forth, so it can be unique, this can be unique to this and this can be unique to this, but all of that together can be the composite what you come up with.
Are there some, I know they were designated a long time ago as neighborhood commercial. Are there some of those sites that uh, that as the area around them has developed are not necessarily ideal any longer for neighborhood commercial?
We, the only one that I've ever really been approached by the property owner that would like to do something different is the one at Forty-Fifth and College. Um, that's near the roundabout that enters Avonlea, um, there's an undeveloped corner there. Um, that that pro- property owner is a residential developer, the same developer that drove down and would like to probably just develop it as houses. Um, but um, and doesn't necessarily spe- doesn't specialize in any kind of commercial development. The the thing about that is that it, you know, it still has, you know, a a good corner to be able to have commercial on, access is a little funky. There may be some environmental conditions there. Um, but really, that's the only one that I'm aware of that we've even had any kind of discussions as far as is this even really feasible? The rest have been um, at least in discussion at some point about some kind of the development, whether that's at Forty-first and Meridian or um, you know, the the recent rezone that we did at Thirty-first and Willamette. That one's also had discussions about future commercial development on it. Um, so that that Forty-Fifth and College one is the only one that's really ever come up as far as questioning the feasibility of it.
And so that could be also a potential outcome. Um, as we go through this process, we ju- uh, look at these various sites, do some uh, those neighborhood focused forums. And we assess these these parcels, you know, we look at why they're originally designated neighborhood commercial, those things still hold true as it makes sense. There could be some outcome to that, maybe there's, maybe there's some redesignation needs out there as well. Um, as Ryan said, you know, there's, hasn't been anybody approached except for the one individual. Uh, but that doesn't mean that this like, that might not be a a conclusion of this process as we get into the analysis and uh, public engagement.
Ryan, you haven't been know of the Thirty-first and uh, Willamette is the same owner as the property in Meridian?
No, no, I don't think so, no.
Cause I've been waiting for something to happen on that corner pretty fast.
Well, the there'll be development around it with multifamily development. But the the actual commercial piece is, uh, I think, kind of separate from the the residential development.
Could be heading your way soon, I bet.
I do think we need to up our social media presence for the city of Lacey. Um, it's just, you know, and I know people have their particular platforms they like, but I think the city, like, you know, if you go to Hunnamer Park, you know, why isn't there a City of Lacey booth? And like, follow us on Facebook, follow us on Instagram, follow us on Twitter. Because I think this is a great way to reach a lot of people super quickly, maybe a quick survey on it or something. Um, and I think, you know, and not just for this project, but I think we're not reaching enough people because, you know, are they reading the flyer in the City of Lacey water thing or not? Um, but other than that, they're not paying attention till it's individual. So I don't know, I'm just, I don't know if we have, like, some great interns that know way more about social media than I do, but I think it's not enough. Like, I'll like a City of Lacey um, post and I'll be like one of six people. It's six.
But you know, aren't there a lot of people now who who don't get utility bills because they're living in multi-housing?
Or it's automatic.
Or they've, it's paperless.
Yeah, yeah.
So they don't get that. They don't get that um, information.
But they're getting it on their phones if we're, if they're, if they're signed up or if they're, have the app or whatever.
The bill has been paid, that I get a notice like that, because I asked for notification when the bill's been paid.
But I think they don't know about what's going on with the city.
Correct. I mean, I don't know that you could tag it on to that, I know.
I don't.
But yeah, we, I mean, we've learned from the pandemic that there there's a lot that can be done through the internet.
People were really surprised that we had a community pool, I was like over at the high school and they had no idea. And there's so much information that could be shared.
And I just, there's so many people on on it, but we don't reach them in any of this stuff.
So that's what we had for tonight, so I guess some great information sharing both ways, both from us but also from you guys as far as some of the outreach, so really appreciate the discussion and and stay tuned. Um, obviously, we have a discussion coming up with the council that um, you know, could alter course. We'll see how things go, um, but we'll report back with the planning commission on, you know, what we're doing and the direction we're going here soon.
Is that, is that work session closed? The the council's gonna?
No, no.
It's a, it's a public work, uh, public meeting work session on the twenty-fifth. It it's on, it'll be in person as well as uh, on online. The um, it's gonna have a pretty full agenda because there's gonna be a couple of topics on there.
So it's the second, their last meeting in August is when it is?
Correct. The other item that's gonna be on there is we're gonna be talking, uh, having a conversation with the council about the quasi judicial process and their role within that process and whether they want to look at um, amending the ordinance to remove themselves from that process. They're gonna have that conversation, especially with the the Ria Market as well as the Hicks Lake project's coming up. Um, so we'll have that uh, conversation, which could be a fairly good, robust conversation. We've had it several times before with the council and I think they're ready to talk about it again. And uh, then there also may be some conversation related to um, the uh, the planning commission may remember at the um, uh, joint meeting in January, there was a docket request by Mountain Greens Park, um, Mobile Home Park uh, residents to
Oh, yeah.
review the Mobile Home Park uh, preservation um, ordinances. I mean, at that time, didn't have time to work on it and uh, they uh, and so it's been, you know, basically tabled or put in, uh, tabled to be reviewed this next coming docket to see if we have time and when to pick it up. Um, that came up the last council meeting and so there may be a short conversation related to that and how that would look going forward as well. Um, and probably be, again, something we'd look at, we'd look at the docket for next year.
I had a question about the, you mentioned Hicks Lake. It, there was something about it passed the land use ma- committee or it passed through.
Yes, um, and and Grant probably could speak a little bit more uh, detail about it, but the hearing examiner issued his recommendation and recommendation of approval with several conditions. Um, and now that's gonna be going to the city council for final review. And that will be at their, I don't have a calendar for anybody, be their next council meeting, I think.
August eighteenth.
Eighteenth, thank you, I was gonna say sixteen. Yeah, so it'll be at the August eighteenth council meeting.
I thought they took that off of that.
I think it was supposed to be this Thursday and it got postponed to August eighteenth.
Okay.
Correct, for potential quorum issues. And the hearing examiner took a lot longer than we expected on this decision. He had some health issues along the way and just in some very complicated uh, projects to make recommendations on. So we needed him healthy for future applications, so we told him to take his time and do it right.
August eighteenth, I'll mention to you, is also the night that the council will be considering the annual comprehensive plan amendments. So the private applicant rezone uh, comp plan amendment on Carpenter Road as well as the low-density zone consolidation. So that'll be a heavy community economic development night as well.
A busy night.
Shall we say heavy month of uh?
I'm not taking August off. Alrighty.
And so you're gonna send out the the visuals, right?
Yeah.
Okay, great. I want to drive around them.
It's time to city council meeting now.
Six o'clock.
Six o'clock.
Any communications and announcements?
I guess we're going to the city council.
Yep.
Our next meeting is August sixteenth.
Indeed.
At, what time?
Six.
Six.
In person or remote?
Yes. And we are adjourned, thank you.
Get well, Rick.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Feel better.
Yeah.
Remote sounds so.
I'm gonna stop talking for a while.